I'd like to call the January 2nd, 2015 Jackson County Board of Commissioners organizational meeting to order. Please stand while Commissioner Shotwell delivers the invocation.
Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you, Lord, for coming and bringing us together and selecting us to be the leaders of Jackson for the county for the next two years. We are a diverse group who bring many ideas and strong opinions on many different issues. Let us work together for the betterment of the community, for a stronger and healthier Jackson, and let us all bow our heads and give a moment of silence for our troops who have fallen defending the freedom that we are about to undertake. Thank you.
Reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will now call the roll. Commissioner Lightner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Shotwell?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
We have eight present. Commissioners, if you will, please stand and raise your right hands. You do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner to the best of your ability. Thank you.
I'd like to make a nomination.
Yes. Commissioner Alexander?
I would like to nominate Jim James Shotwell as Chair of the Board of Commission.
Support.
Seeing nor hearing none?
Aye.
At this time, we've arrived at the election of the Vice Chairperson. Entertain nominations from the floor, please.
I'd nominate Phil Duckham.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Phil Duckham for Vice Chair.
Bart.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. The Chairman and the Vice Chairman recommend that the current Chairpeople be County Affairs and Agencies, Commissioner David Elwell, Human Services Chairperson Julie Alexander, and Personnel and Finance Chairman, the Vice Chairman, Philip Duckham. The Vice Chairs be for County Affairs and Agencies, Sarah Lightner; for Human Services, John Palacek; for Personnel and Finance, Carl Rice Jr. Entertain a motion, please.
I'd move to concur with the Chair's recommendations.
We have a motion and support. All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. We now arrived at Commissioner assignments within the County Board system. The Airport Board, currently seat held by David Lechka, which will expire in 2017. Applicants at the current time are John Palacek. Any nominations from the floor? David Elwell.
Mr. Chairman, didn't I get an email from John Palacek withdrawing his desire to serve on the Airport Board for conflict? Just as a note.
Correct. Consider it withdrawn. Any nominations from the floor? Commissioner Duckham?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Walz.
We have a nomination and support. Any other Commissioners? Mr. Walz, are you willing to serve?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the Board of Public Works. Commissioner member, James Shotwell, member. Seat expires 1/20 of 18. I did not get my application in. Commissioner Elwell?
I've nominated.
But I am willing to serve. All right. Commissioner Duckham?
Ah, I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Board of Commissioners, seat number two on the Board of Public Works. Current seat held by retiring Commissioner David Lechka. Commissioner Julie Alexander is willing to serve. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Congratulations, Julie. Community Planning Committee. Commissioner member alternate and in indefinite term was Commissioner Lechka. Is there a Commissioner who's willing to serve? Commissioner Alexander?
I'd be willing to serve.
Okay. Any other nominations or willingness? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Alexander, congratulations. The Fair Board. Seat that expires 1/20 of 18, retiring Commissioner David Lechka. Past Commissioner. Nominations on the floor, please. Commissioner Alexander?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mahoney.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. The Food System Economic Partnership. After a conversation with Commissioner Lechka, he recommends that we have a talk with the Administrator and make this appointment on 1/20. As an alternate, probably needs to be picked because the committee will not be going forward Health Department Food Protection Hearing Board. Commissioner member Carl Rice Jr. Carl, are you willing to continue serving?
Ah, yes, unless another Commissioner just can't wait to get on there.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Carl?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission member for the Health Department Food Protection Hearing Board, John Palacek. Expires 2017. John Palacek is an applicant. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hospital Finance Authority. One Commission member. Retiring Commissioner Mahoney, the member. This is a one-year appointment. Is anyone willing to serve? We have a nomination for Daniel Mahoney to serve as Hospital Finance Authority Commission member. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Judges Meeting. This is the Chair of County Affairs and Agencies, chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. I would expect, I would hope for a concurrence here of this appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. MSU E-District Advisory Council. An indefinite term. Commissioner Lightner is willing to serve. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Commissioner Lightner? Congratulations, Sarah. Parks and Recreation. Commission member expires 2018. Current member, John Palacek. Applicant, John Palacek. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Region Two Planning. Two Commission members. Commissioner Lightner and Commissioner Duckham currently serve and both are, have applied to run again. We have Commissioner Alexander who's willing to serve. Entertain nominations, please.
I'd nominate Commissioner Duckham.
Okay. Sarah?
Um, I just wanted to withdraw my application for that board.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Commissioner Duckham?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Region Two Planning. Commission member, seat number two. Commissioner Lightner withdrew. Julie Alexander is an applicant. Any other nominations? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor of Julie Alexander?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. South Central Michigan Works. Current members are Sarah Lightner, John Palacek, and Julie Alexander. Term expires 2017. Applicants are Sarah Lightner, John Palacek, and Julie Alexander. Any other nominations? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Supervisors liaison, a Chairman's appointment. I intend to renominate Carl Rice Jr. I would hope for concurrence, please. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Traffic Safety Commission. Commission member, Sarah Lightner. Applicant, Sarah Lightner. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Commissioners, on your assignments, and as we, if there are any others, we'll be handling them at the January Business Meeting. We now have arrived at Board Meeting Schedule. Administrator Overton, do you believe you could speak to this again for the audience?
Thank you. We've put a few alternatives out here for having these, having Board meetings. We have found, from administrative side, that having a meeting on Friday morning and then turn around and having a meeting on Monday morning, literally, there's only a weekend to make any changes or, you know, do some more research. It is difficult at best. In addition to that, we found that the Monday agenda is out before we even had the Friday meeting, which is, again, troublesome, and we are requesting that the Board would move back the study session to an earlier day of the week, be it Monday, Tuesday, something to that effect.
And that is which alternative, Mike? A or B?
It really, it's whichever one you guys, if you want to do, if you're willing to do that, if it's a Monday or Tuesday, whichever works best for the Board is, that'll be fine with us.
Mr. Elwell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I had spoken before at the study session when we initially broached the subject of changing it. I initially was not in favor of changing it, but now I understand why they need to do that. My concern personally, for me, working full-time as a department head, is that I use one Monday a month already to come in for standing committee meetings, which I accept. It's tough, especially being a department head, to give up another Monday morning, especially the business that I'm in. We're just typically swamped on Monday mornings, and it would make it difficult. So I'm hopeful, I'm not sure if it matters to any of the other Commissioners, but I'm hopeful that we can move to the Tuesday study session then versus the Monday morning again, and that's what I'll be supporting. Thank you.
Mr. Rice?
I'd like to make a comment. I can certainly support that Tuesday.
Commissioner Overton? Administrator Overton, apologize.
Thank you. The, not that it's an insult. There was also some discussion, and I wasn't there for that meeting, that discussion, but I believe of changing up the order of the committee meetings. So I think that might also, if they, if you change those, the order, it may alleviate you coming in really early too.
Doesn't, it makes it worse.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest we separate those two things maybe, or do you want?
We are, we are a separation.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd move for alternative B then, which is Tuesday meeting, Monday meetings, and then Tuesday Board meeting.
Support. We have a motion and support. Do we want this to be a one-year trial, or do we want this to be in effect for the two years of this Board? Mr. Alexander?
I would recommend the one-year trial period, but my other question is, when would this become effective? Are we looking at then a study session? If this one approved, the study session would begin on the 6th, and then I would ask the Administrator's office if that is going to work with some existing schedule arrangements you've already made for January study session. So another question to add in there to it, so.
The Administrator's informed me that he wants to start in February with that schedule.
In February, okay.
So the current schedule that we've operated under this past two years would stay in place.
So it would be the 9th, the 12th, and the 20th for January, regardless of what we go with, and then we move forward in February?
Yes.
Okay, to clarify my motion, it'll be for a one-year trial, and it'll be beginning in February, as spoken.
There you go, thank you.
We revisit the organizational session in January, yeah. Mr. Lightner?
Um, we have fair conference in Grand Rapids, so two of us Commissioners aren't going to be at the ninth study session if we start in January.
No, we're starting in February.
Well, I know. I mean, if we leave January on the 9th, we're not gonna, two of us aren't gonna be here for sure.
Okay. We would have scheduling conflicts for the whole year. We know that, but you can watch us online. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham? We are in January, following the last two-year schedule, with the normal study session being when it's scheduled right now, and meetings on Monday and Tuesday night. In February, we will meet on Tuesday, the 3rd, at 8, at 7:30? Okay?
I thought we were moving to eight.
Okay?
Well, you could vote on that, I guess, too.
That was in your recommendation.
Yeah, it was in your recommendation, so we'll leave it that way, as a recommendation. So then in February, Phil, you'd come on Tuesday morning, then the following Monday morning, and the following Tuesday night. Okay? Yep. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and support for item B. Madam Clerk, if, could you post the vote? Does everyone have a computer?
No.
Then we'll go ahead and, please.
Commissioner Lightner?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes. 8-0. Scheduled past 8-0 for a one-year trial. We'll revisit this, the organizational meeting, in January. Adopt a resolution 01-15.1 to waive the administrative fee and interest for senior citizens. Have a motion and support. Any comments? Do you have a question? No. We will after this. Do you want to call the roll, please?
Your Chair. Commissioner Walz? On the resolution? Okay. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lightner?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Ananamous.
I'm gonna return to item nine. Commissioner Alexander, did you have a question or a comment?
I did, thank you. So we have the schedule set for the 2015 year from February to December.
Correct.
Per the Administrator's memo, I'd like to have a conversation, discuss the timing of that study session in the February through December meetings. It was his recommendation to move to an 8 o'clock time, and I would also support that in the fact that is the beginning of the official workday for the employees.
That was approved in the motion, so we're all set that way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Were we gonna address the order of the standing committee meetings?
Going there right now. That's what I thought we were going back to. Okay. At the current time, the County Board of Commissioners meets on Monday, and 8:00 a.m. is County Affairs and Agencies, 10:00 a.m. is Human Services, and noon is Personnel and Finance. There's been a suggestion at the last study session that we change Personnel and Finance and Human Services so that our Health Director can attend via phone conference the MAF meeting, which is the State Health Organization meeting. I would entertain a motion to that effect, please. We have a motion and support for County Affairs and Agencies to be at 8:00 a.m., Personnel and Finance to be at 10:00 a.m., and the Human Services to be at noon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Duly carried. That starts this time, right? That starts in January. I believe we've now arrived at appointing the County Administrator Controller as the Freedom of Information Officer as required by state statute. I have a motion. And I have support. Moved by Commissioner Duckham, supported by Commissioner Lightner. Any comments? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Duly carried. County Attorney, approved list of county attorneys. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
We have a motion and support. Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Administrator's office, are there any amendments to this from prior years? Yes?
Are there any amendments?
Yes. Is this a differently, yes?
We've added an attorney per the request of the County Treasurer, Eric White.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just as a note, a typo, I think it is, under Curtis and Curtis, we have him down as contact review, and I think it's contract review, probably, for what that's worth, just a typo.
He's at the very bottom. Any other comments? Entertain a motion, please. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We've arrived at the second round of public comment. You have three minutes to address the Board. Please step forward.
Peter Boermit, want to take the time to wish everyone, all the Commissioners, a Happy New Year, and like to particularly address these comments to the two women Commissioners. One out of eight women in the United States now gets some form of breast cancer, will get breast cancer in their lifetime, they may not die of it, but they will get it. And the World Health Organization has said that cancer, basically 80% of it is caused by environmental factors. And as we know, with mammals, and human beings are mammals, we are not different from other mammals, toxins are stored in the fat cells of our tissue, and that is why breast cancer is such a plague at the current time. Particularly with regard to Commissioner Alexander, who is joining the Board of Public Works, I ask that the women on this Board be particularly aware of environmental issues and of carcinogens being put into our environment, because you suffer from it, and your children suffer from it. Childhood cancer is also increasing at an alarming rate, and one of the reasons for that, of course, is that those toxins are passed on to the young children while they're in the womb, while they're sharing your bloodstream. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We've arrived at Commissioner comments. Commissioner Elwell?
Just like to welcome our two newest Commissioners onboard.
Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. It is nice to see such a large group out there in the audience, and welcome. We would love to have any of the youth within the community to join us in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance in future meetings. So if whoever you are connected with here, you would give your name out, and to my fellow Commissioners, if you have any names that you would like to share, to give our youth in our community the opportunity to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we would appreciate that as well. that as well.
Any other Commissioner comments? Daniel?
Just wanna say Happy New Years to everybody, and it's an honor to serve up here with all of you guys.
Any other Commissioner comments? I wanna send a heartfelt thank you to all of you who chose me to be your Chair for another year. I look forward to working with everyone, and I remind the community that we're nine members, and that we work together as a team, and I look forward to another good year at Jackson County. Motion to adjourn? Motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We are adjourned.